Everybody's ready, we'll go and get the work session called to order. Thank y'all for being here. And I know we have a handful of things that may be involved, but we don't have an overloaded agenda. We do have some other department heads here that may have some things they want to chime in with. The first item we've got to discuss is the neighborhood speed home policy. I know that in our last work session, we kind of soft introduced it and took a look at a couple of other counties. I know a draft was sent out to everyone prior to tonight of at Pickens County. I say something out there, but everybody except for our public works director, who would be the one who would actually have to
Sign off on it.
Work on this as we get through. But Bill had took the drafts from where we had Heversham Hall and Cobb that we were trying to work from those three different drafts, trying to come up with what information would need to be included within and created a draft for you guys. Where you, before y'all dive in with questions, I'll, I think if you've got any information to add on top of it.
I have two things. This is on the back end of what Prince six you are is the application and petition that accompanies the application. Ashley has done a great job at making that look a lot more like it should. So there's three copies for each of you and one for Lisa for the record on that, just so you'll know where it looks like.
Okay.
This is, just pass this around. This is a one-page summary of what was sent to you that we can quickly walk through. And then on the basis of this one-page summary and your reading of the draft, we can make edits. We've got two weeks. So there's four pieces to this. Criteria that govern the installation of speed humps. The application process whereby citizens request the installation of the speed humps. The review process by which applications will be evaluated for approval or rejection. And then the process for the request of the removal of the speed humps. That happens a lot in other places that happen. People decide that they don't want them. So there are about 50 provisions in the overall draft that you have. So I pulled 11 of them just as examples. A function of it, this is, and this is fairly, well, it is uniform across the three counties that Chris mentioned and others. These really are only used from a policy standpoint for roadways whose primary function is provide access to abutting residential properties, i.e. subdivisions. The volume, only road grades with daily traffic volumes of less than 350 vehicles is proposed for this. Visibility, the speed humps must be visible to unco motorists for a minimum of 200 feet either side. No grades greater than 5% in terms of in the vicinity of the speed bump as it relates to 100 foot, five-foot rise over 100 feet in length. No roadways less than 600 feet in length. No posted speed limits greater than 25 miles per hour. Speed humps must be comprised of concrete or asphalt. No plastic, no rubber, not even galvanized. This is something that makes these things a lot more substantial than, and really smoother than some of the others. The inclement weather stipulation basically means they're going to have to agree in writing if this is approved, that public works will not be maintaining the roads scraping basically in the events of inclement weather involving frozen participation of any kind. Public safety input, the site basically has to be, I mean, this is, this is, I mean, three sentences here condensed down from some of what you've got in here. That basically says as a practical matter, the sheriff's office and the public Pickens County Department of Public Safety representing fire and other things basically have to sign up on this to make sure that this can accommodate the safe passage of emergency vehicles. Then petition, all applications must be accompanied by a county certified petition approved by 80%, at least 80% of the legal property owners on the affected roadway and by at least 50% of the remaining legal property owners in the affected subdivision. So 80 on the street, 50 elsewhere. And for purposes of this, if a party happens to own more than one property in the development, they only get one vote. And if you've got joint owners, joint legal owners, tendencies in common, tendencies by entirety in a single household, there's only one vote. Both of them can't sign on for two votes. So those are basically two footnotes off that. The removal, application for shareholder removal will only be considered after speed humps have been in place for a period of at least three years after finalized installation. There's 39 more in your material, actually more than 39 more in your materials, but I thought these were kind of the more interesting parts. At least, at least some of the things that we've talked about in small groups and then in larger groups in terms of the interest points. So that's basically it. We've got two weeks to modify this to your liking. I think the plan is to bring it up on the 19th.
So I have a couple of questions. Specific to bullet number two with volume, 350 vehicles a day, how are we going to determine how many vehicles are on that road?
We put a sign and monitors it to verify. Before that would be part of the evaluation process once they apply.
Do we have access to those or does that come from the sheriff's office?
We do, we could do that.
Okay.
We have a sign.
We take them turns here, give them.
You can go.
For, for the inclement weather stipulation, do we have in writing anywhere that says that we don't do that for the existing speed bumps? It's kind of irrelevant to this conversation.
Well, it is, it has a high likelihood that turning up our equipment.
Oh, I get that, but I just, I was wondering if it was written anywhere else we currently did that or did.
We only have two neighborhoods that have them right now that are actually.
I'm just racking my brain.
You have Tate and then over off of Records Road, off of Beth Avenue. There's some off Beth and then in Tate, there's some. Once you get outside of those two, I don't know of another that's on a county road at this time. I mean, they had some in Tate at one point over off of South Station Street that they got picked back up.
Some of the ones that they put out and they took back up.
Yeah, within a short period of time.
At least be to my last question. So after the three years elapsed, if the development or community wants to remove them, what is the process for them going about doing this?
It's the mirror image of the process to put in there.
Same.
Same thing. And that process, I didn't put it on here, but that process is basically goes to public works. Public works makes the recommendation and comes to you, you guys for approval in the policy. And even if they meet all the criteria, you can still choose not to do it.
My only thing was about the inclement weather, would we still be able to brine the roads or do we even brine those roads in the first place? I don't really know.
We usually just kind of hit the main road. Usually they're residential. Some of them we may hit some if we have the time, but most of the time we're just kind of sticking to the main road.
But this wouldn't.
It wasn't affect.
Affect brine, okay.
You know, it's slow, but scraping.
Okay.
That's what the problem is.
Okay. And it's only subdivisions that have county reps, correct?
Right.
Okay.
Yes, one of the stipulations, well, one of the conditions in there you see is that the county has to maintain all of the road. So not even a partially, the way it's written now in the draft, not even a partially maintained road by the county could be petitioned for the way it's written now.
Any other question?
Is, is there a scenario where we would put a speed bump on a road that we don't have on the whole road?
Sure. Well, I don't know. I mean, that's the application process. I mean, you could always consider something outside the application process. For example, this is applicable, the policy itself's applicable more or less to subdivisions. So if somebody came in with a request outside of the process, you may put it through the same process or another process for your consideration. But generally those kinds of cases don't have the same compelling reasons, or at least the perceived compelling reasons that subdivision types of environments have. But that's where the, you know, the basically the traffic control is.
When you have a subdivision, it's either all going to be in the city or it's all going to be in the county or it's all going to be state. I mean, state wouldn't have a subdivision, but there's rarely ever a subdivision application. I can't think of an example where they're split in a subdivision. You might have some private roads that come off of the subdivision from some old grandfather subdivisions, but. Yeah, I don't know of a, I don't know of a situation where it wouldn't be all ours or all cities.
Well, we have this applicable since we're talking about Tate, like if where they are in Tate now, would they be able to petition for this even though that's not really a subdivision? It's.
Their grandfather, because they were there before.
Well, no, no, I mean, I don't, can't think of another area like that in the county really off the top of my head, but the other roads in Tate, if they were to want them, like on.
Because they're not subdivisions and they're pass-through roads, I don't think they would be able to meet in the criteria.
Like on Christian Avenue or something, it's kind of.
That's, that's a subdivision, I believe.
Christian Avenue.
You're talking about someone, girl.
Yeah. Yeah, that's a different. There's another way to take.
Like so a road like that is what I'm thinking of.
Yeah, it wouldn't, I mean, when you read the, the way we currently have it drafted, because it's cut through and it's used as pass-through, it would not apply because the, the, the design of the road. It's not just to enter into a private residential subdivision.
I'm good.
Alright, so right now we'll plan on putting that on the agenda for the 19th. If y'all have a question that you think of after you've read back through it again and looked at the highlight of points, if you'll send that to Bill or Lisa. That way we make sure we get that factored in between now and the 18th or 19th.
19th.
19th, yeah.
As I said that, I was like, I'm.
They will meet in there. Okay, alright, then we'll get that on there. We'll be good to go. Road Department, since you're the guy that now needs to get through and read all of that, it's a good transition to get you to plug in on the road department side. Any updates?
I just got kind of a running mill report here of what, what we've been up to this month. Mowing, we have a maintenance contract with the state on the roundabout, so we started taking care of them. And we mowed them twice this month, trying to get them to look a little bit better. Hops and Road Culver, they're finalizing the plans to get that ready to bed out. Some of the crews had removed a lot of debris from the bridges from the flooding a few weeks ago. We've got a lot of potholes, ditches, a lot of that smaller stuff done this month. Buckin, we did have to pull the crews off a bit to work on the bridges, but we should start back on it here in the next week or two. After we get a bit more storm stuff cleaned up now, but we will get back on it here in the next week or two. And then of course, as y'all know, we have finished the month out with a storm. We had 30 roads affected countywide, brought in three different crews, Phillips crews were helping. Most of it were out about 1:00 AM. At the time I wrote this, we still had a lot of trees and the wire that we've since got about everything cleaned up now. Paving is done. There's still a little bit of striping and shoulder work to finish up, but everything, you know, for the most part's done. Looking the next year, what roads we won't start looking at. We know we're going to pave Salem Church Road and then we're going to look at the micro-surfacing on some of the smaller streets. We'll need to be thinking about what, what we want to be doing on those. I just wanted to thank Philip and his guys, 911 EMS and SO for all the help during the storm. I appreciate 911 for all the work they do because I could not do it.
Just took just a few hours of being down there with them the other night to realize that Christie had came in to cover the radio herself with them and.
We appreciate having you.
I would be a nerve wringer.
However, I would have picked being in 911 rather than being in Phillips Department that day because they were fixing a water pipe across Henderson Mountain when the storm hit. They were out in the field working on a water pipe and got caught in the middle of it, so.
And had to cut the way out because trees come down on both sides.
Well, maybe Henderson. Sometimes you need an invention. When I got to 911 and they told me that their crew was still out, because I knew they were working on it before, but I didn't realize they stayed up. I drove straight out there to go check on them.
And we wouldn't have stayed out there if the storm hadn't hit because we're done, but we had to delay for about three and a half hours.
Yeah. So. Yeah, definitely made for experience. I know Amocola, they got hammered hard and all the counties that they serve, their line crews have been working their toes off on top of it too. I'll echo what Kirk said and for his, his guys too. I mean, everybody came in and knocked it out. Chief Brayth was on the radio dispatching from the field. He was, he was working active, I could hear him out there. And Sloan was out working with another crew getting stuff cleared and getting people out. We had, we had everybody kind of hit the ground running, so it worked out well. Very, very thankful. It could have been, could have been way, way worse. So for the amount of trees that came down for as little property damage that occurred, it was pretty fortunate. Cherokee actually had a fatality where one landed on the car. So we were blessed to do with that. Y'all have any questions or anything?
Good job to everybody.
I will, when he mentioned micro-surfacing, one of the, the different paving processes that can happen is, is what's called micro-surfacing for roads that don't have a lot of big truck traffic. It's a thinner layer, but it's, it seals the road really well and puts a good smooth surface on it. Speaking with several of the counties around us, you can typically get about three miles of micro-surface for every one mile of asphalt surface. And it works in like subdivisions like Riverstone, Abbey Ridge, those type of roads very well. But also in some other ones that are, that are county roads that don't see a lot of big truck, concrete truck, dump truck traffic that go through them. So one of the things is trying to identify a list of those so that we can, can really start getting some of these tertiary roads. Cause the last few years, our focus has been on our main, main roads. We've hit Cove, Grandview, Jerusalem, Hill City, Jones, White Stone, hitting all of these bigger roads. But we still have a lot of these older subdivision roads that have reached the, the end of their life. So we're hoping that as we go through looking at the paving projects for next year, the reason he mentioned Salem Church is there was a second batch of elmig money that came out at the end of last year where the governor's office had freed up some of those money to go out to the counties. And that actually hit the dollar amount almost to a T as to what it's going to cost to do that Salem project. I think we already had, had kind of looked at the pricing on them. So that one, we went ahead and locked in for that, that second batch of elmig funds that's coming. So that won't be from SLOSS, that'll come straight out of that elmig money that was there. But trying to come up with the micro-surfacing, I know we still have a couple of other major roads. Just to get it on the record of in the conversation, I know Henderson Mountain gets discussed quite frequently. Philip and I met earlier today and he's been doing a lot of research on trying to get some different pricing for some different options on the water pipe. Because the water lines run directly under Henderson Mountain Road. There's no shoulder to put it on, so it's not like we can go acquire more property to add it to the sides. There's nowhere else for it to go to get the water from point A to point B. But there's some other products in the type of pipe that if it's put on sand, if you dig it back out, put it on sand and you use the other, the other product. It doesn't rupture because right now it's just friction on top of rock, so they keep busting. And every time we get a road patch, you got to go cut it back open and get to the water leak and get it repaired, which is where they were during the storm. Once we have that solid plan in place, and I think he's kind of breaking it into a two-phase process to be able to present the numbers before the full board. Once we have the plan and we're moving forward, trying to get the repairs, we can also work on the paving of Henderson Mountain in a two-phase process as well. We know the condition of the road's getting worse and it keeps one patch on top of another, but we don't want to go spend all the money on trying to resurface it knowing we're going to have to cut it right back open to, to get to the water line underneath it. We're probably looking at this to be in about a two to three-year process total from going through each phase of the water line construction and then the paving. But they'll be getting us numbers, so we'll have it. I just don't want people to think we forgot about Henderson Mountain Road. I know it's been brought up quite a few times and we know the condition of it and it's one of our longer roads that we have. But it is being worked through. And then even the sections coming up to the Salco area where it goes across the mountain, we could go ahead and start working on paving projects for those. The actual crossing Henderson Mountain is going to take a little bit of time to get the water line replacement because it is, it's costly. Material alone was about 500,000 for one route and about 800,000 for another route. Labor's significantly higher than the material cost because of the amount of rock they've got to blast and put sand back in. So it's, it's going to be costly, but it's very much needed too. So we're just trying to make sure we have a good solid plan in place that hopefully it'll work. But I didn't want to, I didn't want to pass and breeze by that as we're talking about roads. We know that it's in bad shape. We're not ignoring it from a staff perspective and I know you guys as the board, I'm sure you get calls frequently on it.
You're starting tomorrow, right?
You don't have a chance. All I got to hear.
That one's locked up, so.
I would love to.
I think, and Kirk would too.
The amount of money that we're going to just save in overtime from being up there, I'd love to. But that, that's 50% of our, our overtime's up there on that mountain.
And it's, you can tell the neighbors are more and more aggravated every time the road has to be closed to fix water line from the level of treatment they give to the staff when they're out there. It's working. But hopefully, I mean, and that, that ties in, we don't necessarily have it on the agenda, but I know it was ran in the paper last week when we had our last call meeting where we approved the intergovernmental agreement for a T-SLOSS referendum. Having that on the ballot, if the, if the citizens of the county actually support that, then the paving side of that project becomes way simpler because the funding availability for the paving of, of really trying to make the paving correct. I know the water is still separate in SLOSS and possibly even, you know, GFO loan or whatever we end up having to do to fund the other side of it. But that does create an opportunity for that. And I'm not, I'm just saying that is one of the projects that's on the project list is Henderson Mountain. So that will go before the voters in November and give us a chance to, to help fast track that process and, and possibly not make it take two to three years. It might be able to move it into a faster time period. But that's, you know, one of those things, we'll get the information out to the, the public to let them know what the plans are. As we get through the next couple of months, we'll provide educational information and we'll, we'll see how it goes, but I think it is a good solution. A faster solution.
I just appreciate y'all letting me entertain the idea of replacing it.
It's needed.
It's needed it for years, but to say, hey, give me numbers so we know where to go.
Yep.
It makes the customers feel somewhat better there's light at the end of that tunnel, maybe. Like you said, two or three years, but they know y'all are working on it, so.
Well, and that's total completion. We're able to start a phase in, in 25 and get phase one done and then do the remaining phase in 26. Or if we're able to do both phases in 25, that either way it gets it, gets it to the realistic possibility of being done.
Would that be a candidate for micro-surfacing? There's no big trucks that go in there.
No.
That one's got to have a lot of milling, you know. It, it needs a heavy base for sure on that one.
We need to shut it down, redo it all.
So for the first time ever, you get to follow that conversation to talk about parks and recreation, which has got to be way simpler, so.
Yeah, right. So Parks and Rec, we are in the throes of football season and flag football season with our kids. We've got around 220 kids playing tackle football and flag football. That's broken out into six teams for tackle and three teams for flag. Flag has been practicing since the end of July or the beginning of July. We just had our first game this past weekend. Tackle started practicing on the 29th and they'll practice all the way up till September the 7th, which will be our Futterston game. And we'll play, we'll play all the way till November the 16th. It is a long, long youth season. I don't think we should play in that long, but Pickens County is just one vote. When we go in that room, they keep pushing it out so longer and longer. In my opinion, youth should be playing in high school, varsity schedule, 10 games. And that's almost what they're playing if they make the championship and everything else. It's, it's kind of a big deal. Yeah, we'll be playing football pretty much the entire fall. And then along with that, we'll start basketball registration next month. And then basketball registration will run all the way up till November and then we'll start practicing. And we're about to start, we'll practice all the way through November through Thanksgiving. And then our first game will be the first Saturday in December. So we go straight from football right into basketball and we'll play basketball all the way till about February. Well, some of the things that we've been working with during the summer, the pool, pool's kind of, the pool's kind of its own separate creature. We were really, really busy in the month of June. And then as soon as the fourth of July week hit, people just stopped coming. And we were getting just a handful of people every single day. Then we would get hit on specific days and then it would just fall off. We'd have three or five people show up and, but it's, it's about normal what we've been doing at the pool. We, our last pool day was this past Sunday, we closed. What we typically do is we let the water sit, let the chlorine kind of get low on it before we start releasing it back out. But we'll be getting the pool closed down. Along with that, we'll start construction on the pool, basically patching. And we're patching literally from now until next May. It takes almost an entire year to get it to where it's open for, you know, the months that we're open. It's a, it's a year-long process. Sooner we can get a new pool, that's going to be an issue. But it's, it's, it's a challenge every single year, just replacing the patches that have come up that we've worked on and things of that nature. We'll thank the road department for coming out and we had a tree on one of our neighbor's property. They came out and got that cut up for us. I appreciate that Kirk for getting them sent out so quickly. That helped out. And one thing I want, y'all don't know, we really work hand in hand with the school system when it comes to facilities. Not only do we get to use the schools facilities, they also use our facilities as well. I don't know if y'all seen the, the water damage that the high school just had. It's pretty significant and basically they've lost a gym. And along with that, with volleyball starting for the high school, they're down to one gym for basketball. So we're working with the, the girls team, they're coming and shooting during the daytime when there's hardly anybody there. The high school is letting us have all our youth football games there and flag football games at the high school, which is awesome because we don't have a facility to make that happen. We let the junior high come over and practice softball on our field. So we've got, we've got a great working relationship with the high school and the board of education, not to mention the soccer complex, which is the school board property as well. So I'd like to see that maintained. Anything we can do to help the school system out, the road department's always, you know, out there to help them out. So, yeah, it's been, it's been a busy couple of months. Back before we took over football, about four or five years ago, this was actually our slow period. And since then, us taking football over, it's been just Katie Bartlett's words when it comes to, it's one thing after another. So that bow and grass.
How many teams in the flag football?
So we got three. I'm coaching one of them. We got two elementary school teams and we got one middle school team. Flag is very, it's a very new sport. When it first started off, it was just Fannie County and Dawson. And since then, now we've got Fannie County, Dawson, Gilmore County, Towns County, Union County, and then of course Pickens. And we're playing, you know, this kind of weekend, we'll be at Fannie County, then we'll go to Union County, we'll play in Towns County. So it's a, it's a growing sport. I think it'll probably stay on the youth level for a while. When you get to the high school level, it basically interferes with basketball and coaches don't want to release their best basketball players to play flag. Cause flag is just like high school football, it goes all the way through December and they start playing basketball games in November. So it's kind of a, you can either do one or the other. But it's a girls' sport, this is the first year we've had two elementary school teams. And we're not going to have one until people are beating down the door requesting me to make another one. You know, we got permission through the league and we've got two elementary school teams now. So, which comprises about 28 girls, 14 players, 13. So.
That grew fast.
And we were playing our game in Dawson County at 2:00 on Saturday afternoon, absolutely burned down. It was so hot. It was awful. It was awful. But it's a, it's a growing sport and we're kind of on the front end because there's no one in North Georgia except for Fannie County that does it on the high school level. It's just the youth right now. So we do elementary schools up till third to fifth grade and then sixth or eighth grade is the middle school team. So once I get into high school, there's not any ambition to play flag football yet. So, yeah.
Y'all have any questions?
I mean, those kids will grow up, watch flag football. Keep it going and hopefully get the gym and the hospital.
Appreciate it.
Alright, reviewing the land use intensity change, I know it typically gets referred to as, as rezones, but officially it's land use intensity district change. I know it, it typically gets referred to as, as rezones, but officially it's land use intensity district changes. So Charles, I'm going to give it to you.
All right. Let me mention first, uh, case RZ dash one-nine-zero-seven-seven-five-one. Uh, the applicant is eighteen ninety-three LLC Ryan Armour. This is a down zoning, uh, application. So we will have a full staff report ready for, uh, the August nineteenth meeting.
Okay.
Uh, let me see here.
And that one's going all the way from urban residential to a state residential, correct?
Correct. And then this next case was previously tabled, uh, RZ dash one-nine-zero-six-eight-four, uh, Jeff. Sorry. JTF Houghton. Uh, uh, the, the location of property is twenty-eight-eleven Waleska Highway one-oh-eight, uh, Jasper. Uh, the request is from agriculture or AG to highway business HB. Uh, the lot, uh, the approximate, uh, square footages, uh, of the, well, approximate area is forty, forty-five acres. Why, why I have square footage in my mind? And, uh, the intent of the zoning request is to sell the property to an individual for the development of a commercial park.
Affectionately known as the chicken house. That's what everybody is always referring to, the location of one of it.
And you, you all see in your notes, uh, survey of the proposed development. Uh, staff's recommendation after reviewing the applicant's request to rezonate the forty-five acre parcel from agriculture to highway business, staff recommends approval of the request with the condition that the property is developed consistent with the land use intensity. Find that in table six, uh, dash one, dash one, in section sixty-seven, dash eight of our code of ordinances. Uh, yes. Any questions?
So on this one, uh, I'll, I'll admit my ignorance. I have not watched the video yet. Does he have a, an existing business he's wanting to move in here or is he building these and selling?
For the most part, he's building, building the sale, sale.
And this one actually went before the planning commission back in May. So this one's not one from this previous planning commission meeting. It's supposed to go to you guys on the planning commission or the board commissioner's meeting in June. But it was tabled by the applicant. They were waiting on some blood plane studies to come back and I think they finally got those back. But the initial intent, and that's possible that it's changed between now and then, that they had a buyer lined up that was going to purchase the property and then develop the, the business plan.
What's the water situation there?
It's served by city.
It's served by city water. Yeah. Yeah.
It's right next to where their booster pump is, isn't it?
Mm-hmm. It's at the bottom of that building near the bridge.
They wouldn't be able to get to sue it, correct?
They, I talked to the real estate agent on it and they said they'd ask, but they said no.
It has to be.
As of right now.
It has to be in the city and it's not contingent to a city property right now.
Okay.
Any other questions on that one? All right.
Uh, next application, R, RZ dash one-nine-zero-seven-one-six, uh, Charles Houghton. Uh, location of the property is one-nineteen Inland Drive, Talking Rock. Uh, uh, the request is from agriculture AG to rural residential. Uh, this is approximately six acre portion of the thirty-six point sixty-one acre tract. Uh, the applicant's intent is a zoning request to split the land into two, three acre lots for resale. And if you notice, uh, the request is, uh, consistent with the character area that's envisioned in our comp plan and future land use map. It's a rural residential. Uh, then staff recommendation is after reviewing the applicant's request, staff recommends approval of the request to rezonate the six acre portion of parcel zero-zero-two, zero-zero-one, zero-zero-one from agriculture to rural residential. Any questions?
Nate, you probably can't answer this, but if they're going to three acre lots for resale, has the conversation ever occurred of the state residential versus rural residential?
I asked the question and there was not much interest on that side.
Say why?
He didn't. I could always reach out and ask again prior to y'all's meeting, but I know that he was preset on going to a rural residential. And I think that also had a lot to do with the surrounding property being rural residential. And so he was trying to stay consistent with that. But that one in the meeting, he does talk about the reason that he's doing it is to, to basically promote more things that he's going to do at the, the winery. He's going to pay some parking lot areas and things like that with the money that he gets himself.
I remembered that part from the meeting. I just didn't remember in the state residential portion of the conversation. But, okay. Any others? All right.
Next case, uh, RZ dash one-nine-zero-seven-one-seven. Uh, the applicant is Curtis Roper. The address, location of property is five-eighty Eagle Percy Road, All Round. Uh, the request is from agriculture AG to rural residential RR. Uh, looking at six point twenty-three acres of, of the nineteen point eighty-six state tract. Uh, the applicant's intent, the zoning request is to sell the land to an individual for the construction of a single family home. Again, uh, this, this request, uh, meets the criteria of the char, character area envisioned in our comp plan. Uh, and, uh, future land use map. And staff recommendation, uh, is for approval of the request to rezonate the six point twenty-three acre portion of the parcel zero-six-nine-zero-two-seven-zero-zero-three from agriculture to rural residential. Any questions?
I kind of have the same question about this one.
Yeah. So this one, he, I thought I asked the same question. I, I offered the, the possibility of going to a state residential as well as small act. Um, and he actually does talk about this one in the meeting because the planning commission actually asked him that. The guy that he's actually going to be giving the land to is a very close family friend of his. So it doesn't, oh, you know, qualify for the intra-family split. But he said that his only thing is the guy, he's probably his thirties or so, I would say. But he doesn't currently have kids, but he said on the chance that he has a family and wants to give land to his kids in the future, he doesn't want to have to make him go back to the rezon process. Cause if it goes through rural residential, it'll already be set up to where his kids can go on a split.
What's, is there anything you spent on that to get it all the way back there or?
There is, yeah.
Okay, there is. I forgot you can see it.
Yeah, it's on that, the survey that shows the proposed split on that backside. He offered the sixty foot he sent back to that lot.
And just for, uh, just a note, uh, when applicants come to our office, it's not just dropping off your application. We try, we try to, uh, schedule meetings with them and discuss various scenarios with that's been them. It's up to them to make that decision, which roughly want to go, uh, but just, just wanted to throw that out there.
So when they show up and say, hey, I want to do six acres to rural residential, I'm like, well, you could do this and there's another option of this. I, I try to make sure they know all the options and that they take care of.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Any other questions? Last but definitely not least, uh, RZ dash one-nine-zero-seven-one-eight. The applicant is Sean Noe. Uh, the location of the property is three-five, three-fifty-six Drop Shot Drive, Jasper. Request is from, the zoning request is from agriculture AG to rural residential RR. Uh, the property is approximately five point five seven, five point five seven acres. Uh, the intent, uh, the applicant is, uh, zoning request is to construct an additional single family dwelling on the tract. And again, as with the others, this, uh, rezoned request, uh, fits the criteria of the character area of rural residential. Uh, and the recommendation that the staff have to review in the applicant's request, staff recommends approval of the request to rezonate the five point fifty-seven acre tract known as parcel zero-four-five, zero-seven-three, zero-one-six from agriculture to rural residential.
This is the whole thing. It's not splitting something off. That's correct.
Yeah, it's, it's currently a non-conforming.
Well, not a, it doesn't mean the full ten acre, but.
And I know we have one other that was before the hearing, but they withdrew their application at this point. So. Any questions on? Good. Thank you guys for putting that together. I know we'll have the whole hearing and a meeting on the other and then we'll have these, uh, meetings following that. Uh, this weekend will be our planning retreat. I know the ad went to the paper today. So we'll have board planning retreat. Carl Benson Institute's going to actually conduct it. We're going to use the convention center employees on, uh, Friday evening and on Saturday. So would you have that coming up? Uh, I know. Look forward to, to a whole lot of planning, a whole lot of, uh, going through, getting ready for the coming year and for the rest of this year and just kind of laying out vision for what we'll get going forward. Uh, any other that I'm missing? We will hopefully know next, by the end of this week, if not the first part of next week, when we'll need to schedule our meeting for setting the mill drake. Um, we still don't have the digest provided over yet, but that's in the process of being finalized. I think that the board of assessors meets tomorrow. Once they've approved it, they'll send that over to the tax commissioner. And once he's done it, he'll send it over to, to us for finance to start getting stuff prepared. So we should know within just the next few days, but we've got to coordinate that schedule with the school board. So we have to do ours after the school does theirs. So as soon as I know when they have their scheduled, I'll, I'll send some, some dates through Lisa to both of you guys to see when we can get our meeting held and get that set in time for, for tax process to occur in September. Uh, realistically, probably will be the last week of August, but, uh, don't know that until we see the numbers and see what all comes through. So also to that, that's all I have. Any other department heads have anything that needs to be thrown out there? I know Randy's been working his tail off on buildings and roofs and handicap ramps and naming. So, uh...
Still don't have a permit.
Yeah, let's move on. Uh, I, I had a verbal confirmation that it was approved, but I've not seen the signed piece of paper.
We might have to pull out some papers.
Yeah. I did get the verbal confirmation on the telephone that that was approved. All right. With that, we'll adjourn the work session. Look forward to seeing some of you at the retreat. And then after that, we'll have a meeting on the nineteenth.